Do you guys want me to talk into this thing so you can get a test? I see you back there giving me the thumbs. Okay. Woo! Yes. Alright, is everybody ready? Everybody ready? Alright. It is 5:01, so... Yeah, with that, I will call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Schools, uh, school board to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Stacy will read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you Stacy. Um, the first item on our agenda this evening is item A, and this is the public hearing for the new Lowell Elementary Furniture Project. Um, and so with that, I would declare the public hearing open and ask if there was anyone here this evening who wishes to come forward and speak about the furniture purchase. We have a pretty slim crowd, so I'm guessing no on that. Um, so seeing no one, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you India, and a second Aster. And this doesn't recall a roll call, does it? It does, okay. So, um, then, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye, India.
Aye, India.
Sue.
Aye, Sue.
Aster.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Lyle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the hearing is closed, thank you. Alright, the next item on our agenda, I'm guessing, is gonna be the same. Information from delegations and individuals. If there's anyone here this evening that wishes to address the board, I would ask you to come forward and state your name and address. Oh great, I'm sorry. Hi Jody, I'm sorry, I didn't even see you there.
That's okay.
Okay, so you get your three minutes, I apologize, like, I...
No, it's okay, my name is Jody Baller, my address is 2778 Crestline Avenue in Waterloo. I am the new WEA president, as well as a teacher at Hoover Middle School. And I just wanted to introduce myself and tell everyone how excited I am to work with you the next couple years, and to thank you so very much for the negotiations that happened with our contract, um, this spring. This was my first negotiations, and it was an amazing experience to work with the board and, um, or with the district leadership, and be able to, um, come to a compromise so quickly and support our teachers, and really help show their value by increasing their wages. So I wanted to thank you for that, and, um, I wanna try to attend the board meetings to just kind of get a feel for what is going on with, um, the different pieces that are being passed. So if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming, and like I said, I apologize, I need to put my glasses on so I can see that we have real people in the audience, so... Not the, not the rest of you. That didn't come out right. Sorry, the chocolate bar out there. Okay, see? Clearly, I shouldn't be allowed to speak, it's, it's just not my night, so... Alrighty, the next item on our agenda then is the consent agenda this evening, and it consists of six items. The minutes of the June 14th, 2001, regular board meeting, and the June 21st, uh, 2021, special board meeting, which is item B. Uh, personnel appointments and adjustments, item C. Bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, item D. The donation from the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa, item E. The leader and me agreement, which is item F. And the new Lowell Elementary Furniture Project, which is item G. So may I have a motion to put those items on the table, please?
So moved.
Thank you Sue.
Second.
Thank you India for the second. And are there any items that board members wish to have removed?
Item E.
Item E. Okay.
C Charlie and G Golf.
C Charlie and G Golf. Excellent. Okay, so that leaves item B, D, and F. So all those in favor of approving those three items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to, um, exhibit C. And the recommended motion here is the Board of Education approved the personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Aster and Sue. Alright, end discussion.
Yeah, um, I see we got 26, uh, additional certified with five, uh, resignations. I think they're resignations, not retirement. That's a 21 net. How we, how we doing? How's it stack up against what we think enrollment is? Or where, especially with the pairs? How we doing that? Where are we gonna be short?
All right, well, yes, what? Five questions there, which one? Which one you wanna answer first?
Take them in any order.
Okay, so I guess where we're at, based on your net analysis, we still have yet to have some positions on this agenda. So, one of the things that, from a board standpoint, just so you know, even though we may hire somebody and get them in our office and get them, um, through our process, the one thing that's missing sometimes is their licensure, especially if they're a new teacher. And so that may not happen until later on. So you're still gonna see some, um, hirings come through, um, over the next couple of months, especially in August in particular. As far as where we are short, uh, we are short on counselors, or we are short on math and science positions currently. We are short, we are short in pairs, but I would say I'm not as concerned about pairs right now. I do think there's going to be a significant shift in pairs applying to positions come August. Um, I've noticed, just in talking with my colleagues across different organizations and companies, that there's, right now, just a lull in hiring. Where individuals, and I think you've seen it sometimes, also on people's windows as well. I think people are spending some time over the summer, spending some time over the summer, um, because of, you know, not having that opportunity last year in COVID. And so I do believe that we'll get more positions, and post actually, for some more positions here in, um, August especially. The other... The other ones here that are resignations, um, are either ones that I see that we are, we've actively actually posted for and are expecting to fill, either again at the next agenda or the agenda afterwards in August. So you'll see those coming into the two meetings, um, subsequently. The other thing you asked, I'm trying to remember all the questions, Lyle. I think I missed one.
Yeah. Check away the pairs now. We have a special program for them, don't we, to upgrade? To...
To teachers? Or just in general, are we working on something to, I mean, look at more pay?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had talked about that, I think Aster brought that up maybe three months ago, uh, in regards to looking at that. We're still working with, we haven't met with their union yet. Again, we're not negotiating, but we're talking about are there opportunities? So I think I talked to you about it last meeting. You know, will there be opportunities for pairs as well as teachers to potentially see some additional stipends? Yes, um, to do more work and, and do some other things in relation to, obviously, the... We, you know, we're not calling it learning loss, but opportunity loss that occurred because our kids weren't able to be in front of us for that time period. So that's happening.
A lot of organizations are providing bonuses of some kind. Are any, any schools in Iowa that you know of providing math or science signing bonuses?
That's actually a conversation I had with, um, Maureen today at 3 o'clock. We were look, it's based on a timeline, so for us, we'll be looking at a signing bonus for those hard to fill positions. Um, you know, I wanna see whether or not we got some candidates from our math and science currently, but if they haven't been, if I look at it later on tonight or even tomorrow, we'd probably do a signing bonus, we did it last year, a special ed. So that's where we got some good people in late for special ed because of that signing bonus.
And then, oh, the other question was, huh, you know, staffing in general, are we... Are we... Are we at all confident in the number of students we're gonna have, or, or is that still pretty fluid?
I think it's pretty fluid. Yeah, I think it's pretty fluid, right? Oh, go ahead.
Oh, that's what I was gonna say, it's registration open today, so we should know, but... Yeah, I think we're pretty confident that we'll have, what we don't know is the kindergarten class, and of course, the open enrollments are still, um, you know, something that we're monitoring.
And that's what I remember, we have put some additional measures in place to address the opportunity loss. For example, we reduced class size in the elementary as much as possible, or when I say much as possible, we reduced it by about three students. Um, and so there should be addition, we've hired for additional elementary teachers, even with the potential for declining enrollment, to try to combat the opportunity loss of COVID. That's a strategy that we're using for this upcoming year. And so, um, you'll see that again in some of the numbers as well, or you've seen it where typically we probably move some teachers around. In September, we may not be doing as much this year because of that class size, um, decrease.
I see we've moved about, we've got five on this list of elementary teachers to be virtual. Uh, how's that struc, what's the structure of that program gonna be this year?
Um, we are going to have approximately one teacher per grade level. We definitely have enough students that have signed up for elementary virtual, and then we have some others to support, uh, the larger. So I think about third, fourth, and fifth, we have about 30 signed up in each. And so it's too, too small of a number to do two sections, but we're going to do some, one section with additional support in literacy and math, um, for, for those larger numbers.
And where are we standing on the number of virtual?
Virtual total, uh, K through 12 is about 575.
Wow.
So 40 per class?
About, it's, the, the higher numbers are at the middle and high school. Yep, and, uh, one thing that is different is we will be doing all, um, direct teaching for virtual this year. We will not be using, um, any canned program for the elementary.
So that's these, these, the staff listed here.
They will be teaching, yep.
Hundred percent.
Mm-hmm.
Virtual, so they'll own them. And we'll have a total of one per grade, we'll have, how many?
We'll have a total, I think it's six, or no, seven? Seven or eight, so that we can provide, instead of having two classes of 15, you might have 30 for some subjects and then break into two classes of 15 for especially the literacy and math portions.
And then what's, what's, what's in place to catch those that, that aren't participating very well? Do we have a, some sort of an escalation process to do more contest?
We're still talking about this, and we've also, um, hired some support to have an attendance person, a family support worker specifically for this, uh, for virtual, so that we can get on top of that right away. And really, if students need to come back because they're struggling or any other reason, that's, um, we'll get on that as soon as possible and not wait.
And then another related item, what's, what's the... Are you gonna have a report on summer school, or what, what?
We have, we just started week four, so we have three weeks left, um, of summer school. And then when we finish, we will, um, we'll have a presentation for summer school. So we had three weeks, oh, sorry, shamefully if I interrupted you. We had three weeks before, um, the 4th of July week. The 4th of July week, the students and teachers had that whole week off because we did that to really try to get encouraged, especially teachers. We just weren't getting a lot of teachers to sign up. Um, and it seemed to be working well, um, having that. And then they just started today for the next three weeks. And then they'll be finished July 27th-ish, I think.
I went to Kedro this morning just to see. Um, and I will say, I was really impressed. I mean, it was the first Monday of this kind of second through three weeks. Just kinda stuck my head randomly in classrooms, I mean, I didn't wear a charge coat or anything scary. But, uh, but I was really impressed with the engagement of the young people. And, I mean, I was in a first grade classroom, and they were all in their little pods, and they were all reading, and, and this was like at 8:30 in the morning. They had breakfast, they all sat down, they were all on point doing their stuff. So I know that there's six different sites, so I'm sure if you wanted to go out, you could do that, just to take a look, but... And I think the number that Jen Hartman told me this morning was about 775. Which, you know, we started maybe a little bit closer to 800, but to be halfway in and only have lost that many young peo, young students in terms of coming every day, that's pretty good.
So it is a significant number of those that didn't participate, uh, uh, very much in the virtual last year, or some of those in summer school, and are they done?
As many as we could get, and we've begged, communicated, written form, emails, uh, knocking on doors, everything we can do to really, especially those who, um, who were out longer, whether they were on virtual and just didn't participate or for other reasons, to really encourage them to come to summer school.
And how successful was that? Did we get half, or...
I can't tell you the exact numbers overall, but I think, well, I mean, we're still not far from that 800 number, which says that's how many we identified as needing to come. And so if we're at 775, that's really good.
Other, the other thing, Lyle, that I was impressed with was, if you remember when we started the summer academy, what, six, seven years ago? We particularly looked at that 25 to 75 percentile. And this year, as I understand it, we basically said anybody that wants to come is welcome. So I asked the question this morning, so based on that, would you, would, are the students that are coming, were they, you know, which end of the spectrum? And, and it was definitely the children who needed more support who have signed up to come, which is the exact point. So I was really happy to hear that, that opening it up to the 25% and below, there, we, we caught some families there too.
So then will we have a placement process at the end of... At the beginning of this next year to determine which students are likely to succeed in the next grade?
Yep, we've talked about having those conversations on what that could and should look like next year. And we need to do it student by student, not a, not a blanket, but student by student, look at that.
Okay.
And again, I think a lot of this will be included in the summer school report. We didn't necessarily come tonight prepared to do that, but we, we, we will.
Absolutely.
And we can survey you guys too, to see what questions you might have and, and be ready for that.
My question is regarding virtual learning. Are we going to continue to offer virtual learning for indefinitely? Or what is the plan for that?
I can, I, I can answer that, yeah, our plan is to offer virtual learning indefinitely, um, for K-12.
You mentioned earlier, Kingsley, about, um, shortage on counselors. Is that a specific level? Are we seeing a shortage in counselors, or is it just overall? Is it building-related, or, or...
No, it's, it's elementary right now. Um, and I don't know if there's anything related to it. We had the same, we had the same issue actually the past couple of years. It just hasn't been as exacerbated. Um, I think right now, we're really trying to see, are there any other ways that we can license other individuals? I know that a principal emailed me, I believe, last week about, hey, this individual does a lot of counseling in the community, could they also be a counselor, uh, in our school building? And so we haven't gotten to that point where I'm calling the BOEE and testing that yet, but that's also the next part of this, because we don't, we don't wanna hire just to hire. I think what, one of the things that's changed, or not changed, but one of the things that I've tried to emphasize is that, let's make sure we have good people in. If we don't get the people that we, we want for the positions, we can wait. But how are we still supporting our students in that particular way? And so we're looking at, uh, what that will mean with two of our buildings in particular at the elementary level. Um, but it's, it's a, it's something that in general is a concern as far as hiring counselors at the elementary level.
So are you saying that as in a certified counselor? Or are you saying it, you know, just adding a position similar to a counselor to be in the building?
No, I'm talking about certified. And so I wanna see whether or not we can look at some transitional licensing for individuals that may have like a master's in counseling, but technically don't have a master's in school counseling. Is that's needed, so, uh, we just haven't had that conversation with the BOEE yet, but we are just through our second iteration of reposting the position, so I didn't wanna be too quick with the trigger without knowing, um, what we have.
And I'm sorry, I'm back to the virtual. I kind of, I just have a question regarding that, because we have found that virtual, there's a learning gap. I mean, so, how are we going to make sure these 575 students that have signed up keep up with us and don't create a greater learning gap?
That's something we will be checking on regularly and having conversations with parents. When, when we, I mean, we learned a lot over COVID. And one of the things is, um, we gotta check on kids weekly at least. And if kids aren't making progress, we gotta pull them back into our buildings because they deserve that. And so we have to be talking with parents as much as possible.
So offering the option is just, I guess, what is the, um, methodology behind offering the option?
I, I can answer that. You know, really Sue, it, it's a matter of making sure that we're providing choices for our families. And so, um, you know, we've, we've really, we've tried to do that as much as possible. And so with the, I think the difference between last year and the, the, the gaps that we saw for, for some kids, we had 20, we started the year with, I think, I think it ended up being about 2,800 kids in virtual. And to be honest, as a district, we had, you know, when we looked at staff and we looked at individual students, there were some times when we thought, this, this is probably not the best, the best route for this child, not the best strategy for this child. But when you're up against COVID, and you're saying, we really think that you should be learning from school, but, you know, there's, there's that fear. And so, you know, we really did try to honor parents on, on that, you know, so, so in that case, truly, safety trumped sometimes the instructional delivery that we thought might be best. This year, it's, it's different, because first of all, we have, you know, a fifth of the, the kids. And so, um, looking at that, and then we've, we actually feel like we have a lot more... I'm gonna use the word leverage, but not in a negative way, just really leverage to talk with families and say, you know, this isn't working, so we really need you to come back into school, you know, if that's what we need to do. So it's, it's a really, it's a different setting when you're not up against, you know, a global pandemic. That being said, we also realize that the global pandemic hasn't necessarily been called to an end yet. I mean, we definitely feel like we're on the, the back end of it, but, um, so, I mean, definitely something to monitor, but we do feel like it's a little bit different. We had long conversations about whether we wanted to continue to choose that. I actually had long conversations at the superintendent level with districts. And I know of one district, I talked with the superintendent, they said, you know, we're just, we're just, we're not gonna do it, we're just not gonna do it. But I also believe when you look at a variety of things like, um, the diversity bill, the open enrollment, um, you know, there, you put all those things together and people want choice. And so you're saying, do you say no when we have neighboring districts that are offering it? So, you know, it really was a situation where we were trying to offer choices to our families. And so I think that was some of the conversation that happened into it. But, and that being said, we also know a whole lot more about how to offer a program that's gonna be successful for kids. So going into it last year, especially for our littlest learners, you know, it was not, it was not what we needed it to be. And by the time we really got to the point where it was a lot better, we had missed quite a bit of, you know, months really of school. And so I think parents who were in virtual program, we started to see some really good feedback coming, you know, by December, January, but, you know, what about September, October, November? You know, you missed, you missed some times. So we're going into the school year knowing a whole lot more than we did before. So I, I personally feel a lot more confident about it. Is it the right choice for every child? Absolutely not. Um, would we prefer to have them here at school? Absolutely. But we're still gonna work with parents to make sure that we are able to serve our kids. Does that make sense?
I think...
Yeah, totally, but I just, I'm, I'm glad to hear more of the monitoring and, you know, and then with the option of saying, you need to come back in the classroom if you're not being interactive, because that just scares me a little bit when, you know, again, offering that without participating, basically. So, thank you.
I, I know a lot of families who, um, homeschool, and so I think this is a great option to bring them into district curriculum while still giving them that opportunity to homeschool. So I think it's wonderful that you're gonna offer that forever or indefinitely. Like, I do think that'll hook, you know, that, that population.
I think we've had a few students open and roll to Clayton Ridge. Is their program substantially different from ours, or don't we know?
No, it, it really isn't. Um, um, you know, I think there was, there were some articles out there recently that talked about some of the earlier online programs. And when you look at their statistics, they're, they're not, you know, atypical from what you see other places. So I don't, you know, to say that that's better or worse, it's, it's just, it, it has a lot of the same similar programs. I believe here, the, the, the beauty of having a virtual program here is you're still gonna be connecting with our staff, you're still, you know, you're gonna do it from your home. But, um, again, I'll say, we, we would by far prefer students to be here so that they can get the whole comprehensive advantages and opportunities of school. But when a parent chooses something different, we definitely will work with them, and we, we believe that's our obligation, so...
I have a quick question. Um, you have mentioned about elementary schools and given the support to teachers. How are we supporting the high school teachers? Um, I know that they were, some of them were quite overwhelmed by the number that they had as far as kids, students online, and just, you didn't mention the high school, so I just wanna touch base with that.
Yep, our six, we actually have a 612 program, so it'll be separate. So we have an elementary and a 612 program. We've actually added staff, um, because of the number we have for middle and high school. So that will definitely be, and we had staff, um, apply. So teachers who really were comfortable and wanted to be a part of the virtual program, not just like we, as you know, we had to pull some teachers and kind of force them to be part. This year, uh, teachers applied that wanted to be a part of that. So that makes a huge difference, um, as well, because everybody who's doing it is doing voluntarily.
So the number of 575, no?
But it's 575 K-12.
K through 12, so how many are high school or middle school, you know? I'm curious though how the number looked different from elementary, the breakdown.
I wanna say, and these are not correct, but I wanna say it was 180-ish for elementary, if, if I remember correctly, that it was about 180 and maybe three something for middle and high school, so six through 12, so...
Okay. With high school being the vast, vast, um, majority of them, and I don't think it changed. I think for a while this spring, I think I was putting it in the weekly update to the board on, and I don't, I think if you went back and look at those numbers, I think they really did hold. They might've changed, you know, one or two or five, but, um, they really did. And I think you're recalling correct, I think there was 180 or 181 for elementary, and then, uh, I wanna say 220 or something for high school level. So that's, that's really where the, the bulk is. And of course, we've, we've had, we've had, um, experience teaching virtually at the high school because we've done that for a long time, so, um, we'll continue with that.
So what, what's the motivation for high school students to go virtual more than elementary?
We've always had some, some students, um, who have done virtual. You know, uh, family preference, um, you know, sometimes there's other circumstances that are personal or, um, you know, family-based, and so, you know, it, it, it's a variety of things. We had some students who had some medical issues that it worked out better for them. So those are some of the motivations. And again, if, I think we're, I'm not actually, we're, are we on the, are we approving each, or? We got all over, I don't know, I don't even know what topic we're on, but... We go back to the personnel appointments, like, just for sure. Yeah, yeah, we could, I, I, I'm just saying, I, I mean, we kinda went all over with questions, but if there are some things that you would like reports on, we would absolutely be prepared to do those too. Super. Okay, anything else for...
I just had one. I'm sorry. I saw, uh, we have, we're losing a native language interpreter. And I don't wanna put you on the spot with numbers now. Do you think that you could kind of give us an overall look at what, uh, where we are with interpreters? And like with the, um, the call-ins for the four-year plans that they've been able to do this summer? Like, have we had interpreters ready? Just if you could kind of look at that.
No, definitely, and I, all, my only point, I'm working Dr. Moore one, because there is a, we're looking at a comprehensive process of looking at what we're doing with our interpreters and our ELL, um, staff, and so, um, we could get that to you.
Thank you.
Awesome, okay, now we've gone all the way around the Mulberry mission. So, all those in favor of approving the personnel appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item E, which is on page 37. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education accepts and acknowledges the donation of $3,575 from the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa to benefit Carver Academy and West High School. Thank you Sue, a second, Aster, thank you.
You know, I pulled this just because I wanted to just give a special thank you to the Community Foundation, because, um, I know they were, you know, grants that were offered, but it's, it's, it's just wonderful to see how they support, um, you know, lots of agencies support the district, but, um, just, you know, and it, and it's, it's needs that they're filling. And I just wanted to thank the foundation publicly. That was all.
Super, thank you Sue. Yes, very thankful for... Yes, very thankful for the donations. We have a lot of community support, which is awesome, so. All right, all those in favor of approving the donation from the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item G, which is on page forty-four. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve the new bowl elementary furniture project and publish a notice to bidders. Thank you, Sue, and a second? All right, and discussion.
Yeah, I noticed on, uh, page forty-five, it says a more detailed description of the kinds and approximate quantities of furnish, furniture furnishings and equipment for which the bids will be received or set forth in bidding documents prepared by ISG, et cetera, et cetera. So what's new in the world of furniture? Is this just kind of a copy of what we have before? Is it open? Can somebody say, hey, this is, this is more valuable, it's more flexible? And so forth, so what's?
Jane from ISG is here tonight to answer that question for you. Jane, just make sure that that mic, if you hit that button, there should be a little green light on. Good, you're good to go.
All right, great, thank you. Um, yeah, so we looked at, um, a lot of different samples. So the furniture that you see will be different than what we have at the other elementary schools. Um, we're working towards a lot more collaborative, um, more mobile furniture. We had, um, I don't know, four or five different groups that came in, gave opinions. Kids gave opinions on, um, the comfort of the different types of furniture that we're using. So, um, a lot more flexible, uh, a lot more age appropriate for the kids too. So, um, and, and just providing different types of seating, I think we have three different types of seating. So giving kids choices in the classroom spaces instead of just, everybody has to sit in a certain chair. Um, so those are just some of the different kinds of things that we're looking at.
So, has the last year changed the, the style of furniture from a cleaning aspect? Or from a protective shield aspect? Are we just, you know?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing on that is, um, all, every, um, ever, anything that is upholstered is all vinyl, which, uh, for the most part, we did that, um, in all the buildings anyway. There was some fabrics that have, uh, a little bit different type of, um, protection on them. But we made sure that everything that we specified is, um, able to be bleach cleanable and, um, easel, easy to be cleaned.
How about the, the shields? Are we, do some of these, are they more adaptable to adding shields? If and when are we done with shields? What, where are we at?
Yeah, I think, I think they talked about we're, we're done with shields, they'll still have them if we, if we need them. But we, we didn't do furniture specific to include shields.
But they can be added, I mean, the same as the standard furniture we?
Correct.
I guess some are more adaptable than others, but.
And when I went to look at some of the samples, I mean, some of them are, you know, they're desks that configure together. There's individual desks and I don't even know where they all landed, but all of them would have a flat surface where you could put a shield, for sure.
So what was the decision process and who participated in selecting the final?
Yeah, um, it started with, um, I think, bo- bo- board members were included, um, principal. Um, and then, then we had different staff members that came. Um, the maintenance people were there, facilities people were there to give input on cleaning and ability to be able to lift furniture up, stack it, um, for cleaning purposes and that kinda thing. Uh, and then we also had some samples that were brought to the school that the kids got to sit, test and make, um, suggestions on what was their favorite items. So, um, and we had all ki- I mean, we had all kinds of different furniture. And in fact, we started off with, um, like a slideshow presentation and getting input on, oh, we like these things, we don't like this, that kinda thing. Um, so it actually, it's been going on for five months. I think we started about five months ago trying to go down the path of looking at different samples. And we had all the different samples in, so everybody could sit, test them and determine what, what was the best furniture and, um, based on what the kids wanted to see.
So is this more or less, is this a performance spec where it says it's got a seat and a ta- table? Or is it more a, a, uh, specific specification in which it's a certain model by a certain supplier?
Yep, it's a specification, like a certain model by a, um, but we're also doing alternates. So we might have this chair is like the student chair, this is the number one student chair that they wanted to use. But we're also bidding an alternate, um, so that you guys can make that decision when bids come in, when you look at the pricing and see the pricing. We're also gonna let people, um, if, it submit for alternates. And if it's a comparable all, um, product, then we'll let them bid that also.
So who, who's gonna evaluate the bids?
Um, we will, along with you guys.
You're gonna see him at the facilities committee.
Right.
What's the timeframe as far as getting the product? Are there any back orders on any of the products?
Um, we, we hope not. Um, we're, um, taking bids, I think August tenth is the day that we're taking bids. And then we'll write contracts after that. And then, um, and then they'll, um, order the furniture and we should have it in, end of December when the project is ready for furniture. Um, there are certain lines that, uh, have had longer lead times, but I think the way that we have the, our schedule, we should be okay with that.
Um, will we still be able to utilize everything that is at, um, the remote site for all?
Yep, we do not, when we build a new school, we never take the furniture with us to the new school. So the, that will go into storage and it will be used for parts and, um, pieces as needed.
That's, yeah, we had just talked about, we're keeping it.
And was there any consideration for stand-up desks for the teachers?
Um, yep, and, in fact, um, all the teachers, instead of having like a regular typical desk, they actually have a sit to stand, mobile, um, kinda pedestal desk, so they can move it all around with, you know, wherever they want in the room. So, yeah.
And I would just add that that was really important because with the monitoring that we're doing right now, a lot of times the teachers will roll to a desk and they'll do a quick assessment and they mark it down in their book. And right now, you see them all the time, they're walking with their record book and they're walking from chair to chair. And this will be really a great way that they can just roll their desks. So I think for a variety of reasons, that's helpful, instructionally, assessment wise as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jane. And Jane. Yes, both of you both jeepers, tell. See, it's not my night. All right, so all those in favor of approving the furniture project bid and the notice to bidders, please signify by saying aye. And those, all the same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried, and I have a very hot mic, so I just keep backing up from it, so. All right, so the next item on our agenda then is item H, we are done with the consent agenda. We will move on to the Sloan Wallace Stadium demolition project. Uh, and this is for our bid approval. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation from Envision Architects and approve the total project bid of one hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars from Benton's Sand and Gravel of Cedar Falls, Iowa for the Sloan Wallace Stadium demolition project. Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, India. And discussion, and you all can see, um, in your board packet, the number of, there were seven bids, um, for this project. And I'm, Jane, I'm sure you could, or maybe one of you from facilities, or Kate's here from Envision, if we have more questions about the bid sheets that are before you.
Yeah, so was it just purely price, since there were some that were so close?
Kate, do you mind coming forward? Thank you.
Hi, all. Yes, the low bidder got the project. I mean, it was specifically about cost.
And is there any concern with asbestos? Do we know?
There is some asbestos in the building and Marty has been working on a separate contract to have the abatement done. And we don't know the actual timeline of that. We did tell the contractors that there may have to be some flexibility in the timeline of the demolition based on what happens with the asbestos abatement.
The one thing about asbestos abatement for some of us to remember is that asbestos abatement, we can go back to the school, resource SBRC and reclaim that money so that it doesn't, you know, it's not additional money, the authority to have spent that. So it doesn't, that's one positive for, uh, asbestos abatement. You may know more?
Um, I actually talked with Marty a little bit this morning about the asbestos and we should be getting the estimates in by the end of the week. So, yep.
We're not anticipating the asbestos would be a huge project.
No.
It's not like.
The only piece of it is that it's a little bit more complicated than some because it's sandwiched between the hard ceiling in some of those spaces and the structural deck above it, just the way Marty described it to me.
So you're talking about like the tunnel, right?
Not in the tunnel itself, but of the space, the cl- the rooms that are underneath the stadium.
Stadium seating.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be a project that's gonna require, it's not gonna meet that threshold to require board approval, though. We do know, it'll be small enough.
Yeah, I'd be surprised if it was, this, I mean, the demolition was.
Right, reasonable, yeah.
So was there any, um, thing that was identified as being salvageable or?
We did include in the documents by addendum that they would salvage a certain amount, and remember the square foot number, um, amount of brick that could be repurposed for paving or some other kind of project yet to be defined. And for the remaining brick, well, not all of it probably, but a certain amount to be in a pile for local people to come and take bricks.
We also talked about, whoa, that's loud. We also talked about some type of memorializing.
Right, but that's not included in these documents. That would be something that'd have to be designed separately from these documents.
So when we, when we say demolition, is it just the, the structure? Or is that including the field along with the goalposts, the, the scoreboard?
The scoreboard stays put, the demolition package includes the demolition of the stadium side and the bleacher side, just the structures and the tunnel. And then it has to be clea- you know, cleaned up adequately, so.
Right.
Um, part of it has some paving, some of it's grass.
So when, so when it's leveled, after the demolition of the structure, it'll be leveled at, as the playing field was? The green space and it'll all?
We're not touching the green space in the demolition at all.
Okay, so the?
It's just where the footprint of the buildings is.
Gotcha, okay.
And would this be the appropriate times that? Yeah, that, um, July twentieth.
Before you do.
I have a quick question, I just want a quick question, um, because it was a question that came, I mean, the caller courier, so we just wanna repeat the question. How much would it have cost to do the repair compared to the bid demolition?
Yep, the, the number that we had looked at really was about a half a million dollars. So we were looking at, um, there were two, there were a lot of, if you remember back to when we approved this project, the first place, we looked at several criteria. And one of them was cost, but the other thing was really the need. Um, you know, we were not really using Sloan Wallace for, um, student activities. And what we really had been looking at was some green space and safer, um, playground area for our Irving students. And so when we looked at all the different criteria, it really was the better thing. So thank you for asking that question, gave us a chance to answer it, um, publicly, especially with Andrew here, so he can put it front and center, um, in the paper. But, yeah, it was about a half a million was the price that we were using for that. But it was not only the five hundred million, or five, five hundred million, five hundred thousand, it was the half a million plus all of the other reasons that we really needed the space for Irving.
Kate, um, is there anything in the structures that identifies it as Sloan Wallace? Is there anything that we need to keep?
Uh, we couldn't find any. Um, what I heard anecdotally was that there used to be kind of a bell tower, kind of a piece on the, I'm gonna call it the east side of the stadium that was demolished sometime back.
Okay.
I mean, that the bell was salvaged? Marty said he thinks he has it somewhere. Oh, is that that bell? Okay, oh, there we go. And, um, other than that, there was probably some signage associated with that structure, because that was the entrance to the stadium.
Right.
But I don't know where that is, it's not there now.
Yeah, Jesse and I walked through there with, with Marty and, uh, we didn't find. We really didn't, there was, there was a, a wooden gurney, I guess you'd call it a gurney, hand carry that, uh, uh, from St. Francis Hospital, I thought was kinda interesting. Uh, it was, it was, and then there were the, and, and, yeah, that's what, that's what it was for. It was, it was, you know, particularly with the old St. Francis Hospital. And then there were, uh, flags, the ones they, you know, carry east, west. Uh, and the colors, before they were changed from red, uh, the west colors used to be red and black, I think. Before Old Rose, so there were some of those flags in there, but nothing structurally.
The documents do, um, require the contractor to walk through the building with representation from the school prior to starting demolition in case there's something else that you want them to protect.
But it was, it kinda came up empty.
Thank you, Kate.
You're welcome.
Okay, back to the?
Back to the July twentieth.
July twentieth, five to seven, so for the public, that will be the ceremony to, um, say your last goodbyes to the stadium and, um, the, get some pictures if you want. And, um, the closing will take place after, you know, that day. So it's Tuesday, July twentieth, so two weeks from tomorrow at, um, right?
No, it's a week from tomorrow.
And it will be from five to seven. And so the public is invited. And will bricks, they won't be available?
No, they don't be, no, no.
Nothing available, and I would just tell you that right now, we are looking at more of an open house type thing from five to seven. Uh, my understanding is there will be a very brief ceremony, but I'm not exactly sure what time. I, I think they're looking at, wow, if I say, I, I think it's gonna be around five six or five thirty-six, somewhere in there, but we will publicize that as soon as we confirm. They were still checking with a few of the featured guests and making sure that they could be there, so we'll have to adjust as necessary. But the rest of the time, you know, people can kinda mill about and talk. We think it'll become a fun evening, uh, for people to just come and walk around and see and reminisce about old times.
And it would be great if people have pictures or anything that they would like to bring that we could keep, you know?
And I have to say, a caller called me and said that they used to hold all the high school graduations there. And the elementary kids would be there and they would have flags and they would wave the flags for the graduates. And she was looking for pictures. She called me to say that that was a fun thing that they remembered at the stadium, so.
So I think the, the scoreboard, I think, is gonna stay in most cases. The discussion was with it to crack the spelling of Sloan. On the scoreboard, or whether it's best to leave it.
All right. One other quick thing too, I think Andrew, I'm sure somebody will be doing an interview with you, but I believe we are going to be broadcasting live. The broadcasting, the, um, the ceremony live over the radio. And we'll make sure we get that out public, publicly on, you know, what station people could turn to, should they wanna listen to some of the stories.
Super. All right, well then, all those in favor of approving the Sloan Wallace demolition? Please signify by saying aye. And chair votes aye, motion carried. Wow, I'm really sorry, you guys. All right, I know, I know, it's all, it's good, I'll just talk quieter. Um, see you, Lyle, everybody's trying to tell me to be quiet tonight. All right, we're gonna move on to item I, which is on page fifty-one. And the recommended motion here is that the Board approve the following policy, the standardized dress code.
So move.
Thank you, Aster, and thank you, um, Stacy, jeepers. And discussion, this is our second reading of the policy. Um, so, um, we did have some discussion, um, at our last meeting, but I know Marle Pageant's here from Student Services. If anybody's got more questions, verifications?
I apologize, I was in the middle of the desert for the last meeting, so I was not able to call in, we had no service. Um, so I just had a, a few thoughts. Um, I was part of the, um, the committee as we were, we were going through this. And, um, it was a lively discussion, you know, there was a lot to talk about. And I think that the changes that were made, I think, are great changes. However, um, I'm a little confused as to why we're going piecemeal with everything. So like, it almost feels like, um, we've lost sight of the forest for the trees. So we're going in and we're, we're picking all these little pieces when the intention in two thousand and nine was to have a complete conformity, right? I mean, Lyle and Sue were on the committee. It was for a uniform look, right? That was, what was the purpose, right? Right, right. And, but I mean, that, that was what we wanted it to look like, was that they would be wearing essentially, because there was even like specific colors for polos per school. Right, okay. So since, yeah, so since then, there's been a lot of changes to relax certain things. So at this point, you can't tell which school from which and you can't tell even really that they're in a uniform beside the fact that they have to have a collar and they cannot wear denim or leggings. So it, it's just becoming confusing to me if we're striving for this uniformity and this conformity, that's not what we're getting. And then with adding cargo pants and hoodies, the big push in two thousand and nine was that those were places that kids were going to carry weapons. I remember that was something the board talked about a lot, was that the reason that those were being taken out of the existing dress code was that there could be weapons put into cargo pants or into hoodies. So if we're adding those back in, then the safety element, we're trusting our students to, to not make that an issue. So if we've addressed then the fact that they no longer look like they're in uniforms, they are no longer identifiable from school to school, they can wear cargos and hoodies. I, I'm a little stuck as to why we still have this very cumbersome, very hard to understand dress code. I pulled up some other UENs and they literally have like a paragraph, one paragraph, that says, you know, we expect our students to come dressed in appropriate clothing, no gangs, you know, insignia, nothing profane, and that's it. Because they put their trust in their kids and the kids' families. And I feel like we are kind of infantilizing our families by telling them that they don't know how to dress their kids or that the kids don't know how to dress themselves. And then at the other end of that spectrum is by having the business-like dress, you're taking away from those very fast, those precious few years where kids get to go to school and get dirty and gross and, you know, pre-K through fifth especially. So I love that, that there have been changes made. But I'm, I'm just confused as to what our thinking is and what, where we're planning to go with this. Is, are every year, are we going to make more changes? Is this going to be how we want to leave it? Or should we take, my feeling is we should take a look at the whole thing and, and really rethink what our, what, what our end goal is and then go from there.
I don't know if anybody else on policy has anything they want to add to that. Stacy, is that, so you have every right to, you know, not, not vote for this policy if you don't want to do that. The, the thing I would think about with is, it was never supposed to be a uniform. It was supposed to be a dress code. And in fact, you know, we were, we were taken to court by it and had to, you know, sort of defend it and.
Because the, because the intent was uniform, that's why it went to court.
Well, no, the intent was to make sure that our kids were ready for school. There were a lot of things and I, I, to go back all the way to two thousand and nine, but.
So it wasn't, it was never a uniform?
No.
Even Cunningham? It was never uniform?
Well, Cunningham might have been its own thing when they did. Cunningham had one color and it was navy and white, I think.
No, it was four shirt colors, two pant color.
Yeah.
But that's how they all started.
And that's when they were doing the single sex classrooms and doing some other stuff. That was, that precedes my time on the board.
Right.
So I'm not really sure about that.
I mean, I, I can't say I wasn't on the board, but I think at least that school was a uniform.
Was a uniform, okay. And that was more to, you know, as I understood it, when I came on to the board, this was to standardize our dress code so that our buildings, our kids were identifiable as our kids. And yes, there were, you're absolutely right, when we first started, East and West had certain colors that they could wear. And we heard from our families loud and clear that we can't always find those colors. And so, you know, we, we have changed, I think, evolved. And so my, my perspective would be that if, if the whole policy needs to be looked at again, I guess I'm, I'm comfortable with these five or, I don't know if it's exactly, about five, sort of, because they are bigger changes, you know, to do hoodies and cargo pants and Crocs and, and then.
Leggings, I think, really need to be looked at. I think that we are penalizing our female students.
Joggings and, yeah.
The, the jeggings not so much because if we're not going to allow denim, we can't allow denim in any form. I mean, if that's what we're going to do. But the leggings, as far as you can, there can be two identical pair of leggings and then one pair has a pocket and one doesn't. And so therefore, one is acceptable and one's not, just because it has a pocket.
Well, and so, so I have two things. One is to say, if the whole policy needs to be looked at again, first of all, I think there's a little bit of a reset necessary after COVID. I think the fact that we were not all in our buildings all at the same time, and I, I just know from the staff and parents that I talked to, I think you've talked about this, there might have been some inconsistencies in the way the dress code policy was implemented. So, so my question or my ask would be for the grace to say, let, I'm in favor of these five changes and then if there is need to the bigger policy, could we give it a semester to see how, how it looks, how it's going? Are, are students behaving? Are they, you know, we haven't had incidents with people wearing their hoods during school, et cetera. And then maybe look at the whole policy again, even, you know, I know we do a two-year thing for policies, but let's not wait two years. Let's do it, you know, timely.
I think a semester would be wonderful.
Okay.
That was discussed. I know India, India brought it up in the meeting.
You know, I brought up six months and it was decided for a year, but I think that's too long.
I don't think we.
We talked about January.
We talked about January?
It did get.
But we also, we also talked about, we also talked about not wanting to do a six-month timeframe just for the fact, wanted to get a, a better sample size and making that be an issue mid-school year.
Right. No, you wouldn't change it at six months.
We could talk about it, about changing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I don't think we, I don't think we determined a timeframe. We did talk about, you know, discussing it further.
Discussing it further, okay.
Because the meet, I, I'll say, it was a interesting policy review. And I think that was the reason why we came to the conclusion that, you know, let's look at it, get these changes, the ones that the students and parents had, had, you know, expressed that they wanted to, you know, see change and then going forward, you know, we review.
Reevaluate.
But leggings, leggings was as high up as everything else at summer.
Okay.
I mean, for young men, finding pants without cargo is difficult. I totally get that. So I think that was a brilliant move to say, yes, you can get cargo because to find anything other than denim without wearing like actual dress slacks, that's great. For, for females, it's equally as hard to find bottoms that fit the dress code. We, those of us with daughters know, it's a struggle.
Did you have something to say, India? I felt like I cut you off.
Well, I, I just want to say, Stacy, that it, the dress code was established for a lot of different reasons when, when we did it. It wasn't necessarily just to, to try to stifle people, but it was safety, as you had indicated. It was, we had a lot of pajama bottoms coming to school with slippers. That, that's not conducive. I had a young son, he had a girl that her, I'm going to say it, butt was hanging out. That's a problem to me as a parent. And, and I, I think that part of it was to create a more professional environment because when we all go to work, we don't have our butt hanging out and we don't go in our pajamas. So we're trying to come, I mean, I don't, maybe some people work too, I don't know. Yeah, if you're working from home. But, so there were a lot of other things than like a consideration of a hoodie and safety-wise, open-toed shoes. There were issues with that. People could get hurt. We had accidents. So, but there was also a sense of pride, I think, because when it was first established, I live right across the street from West High. And it really, the first day that went in, I just looked and I said, man, these kids look professional. They look uniform. So if we would go through, and I would agree with you, we could go through a security camera and we could tell immediately that that person was not to be in that building or why were they in that building? That was a help also when the dress code was established. So it wasn't just to deter people from wearing their freedoms of what they wanted, but we were also going with some gang issues. That, that was a problem too. And they were all, one day wearing red shirts or, you know, things like that. So a lot of thought and back issues went into that. So it wasn't done with just a flip an attitude that we're going to force kids to do this. So I, I would appreciate that you understand the history of that a little bit.
I was very involved during that time. So yes, and I do know that the intentions were, were for students and for staff. I don't, I, I don't doubt the intentions one hun, any, at all. That's not what I'm talking, I'm talking about, this is twelve years later and we've made enough changes where what you're talking about doesn't exist anymore. You can't look on a security camera and say, this child sticks out because we don't just have the red or white polo with khaki pants anymore. You know, there's, there's enough nuance going on. It, it, the uniformity has kind of dropped away. So then I'm just asking for us to really think about what are we trying to accomplish and how, and I don't think there's anything wrong after twelve years to look at the bigger picture. And just, and if this is still what people want, if this is what staff wants, if this is what students want, then that's what we should keep doing.
I don't, the only, I just have the, I have the dress code history pulled up and I, I don't, I don't know if it's helpful or not, but I, the, in two thousand and eight, really the school board was seeking a policy that, and I have the bullet points. So it was really to set clear expectations, to mitigate inappropriate clothing. And of course, we've always had a dress code. So this is not, you know, we've always had a dress code. So address equity and safety. And then something that exemplified and professionalism was actually in quotes because we're not expecting our, our students to be, you know, a businessman or businesswoman. It was really exemplifying professionalism. Something, a dress code that promoted unity and then symbolized Waterloo uniqueness. And so those are really the things. And so I, I personally feel like, you know, the, the dress code, the process that we used to get to this point did really keep those. We, actually, we started every single meeting by reviewing those six different things and seven, if you split up the equity and that safety thing. But we tried to start with those because that was our desire to really continue to bring back a dress code that promoted that. I have actually had the opportunity over the past few weeks really to talk with, with a few parents who have called. And sometimes they call about something else and they say, well, I have you on the phone. Can I also talk about dress code? And just, you know, got a little bit of feedback on that. And I, the, the feedback that I got was, was, was very positive, but that doesn't mean, you know, one person said, I, I really, you know, I wish we didn't have it, but yet this is going to be, you know, really great. And I believe that the, it becomes a little bit more enforceable to look at that. So, you know, those are just, there's, we know that we're never going to please everybody, but I do, you know, I just thought, I don't know if that's helpful or not, but I just wanted to bring that since I had it on my screen. So those are really the things that we're attempting to continue.
And, and you, you brought up that we did have a dress code and we did. It was, it was having difficulty with enforcement, I think that was the issue. And so now, I mean, we're having kids who have been getting, who've gotten into trouble, kids who would have never in a million years gotten into trouble for anything else, and they're losing instructional time over what they're wearing, you know, and they're losing relationships with their instructors and other people in the building because of their clothing.
That's always been. Marla works too much and you're.
Testing? Okay.
There you go.
I agree with Stacy says, but I do think that it does come a time, you know, we come to just kind of refresh and just gather more information. You know, we just live in a different time than we did in two thousand and eight, you know, and I think there's something he said when, you know, we're trying to enforce something, but there's getting a lot of pushback from our students and families. And, you know, when it gets to be early in the morning, I'm already getting a phone call and I just drop you off. That does take a toll on a family, you know, and so I'm glad that we're having this discussion. I'm glad that we are going to make some changes, hopefully that we do vote on this. But I do think this needs to be revisited. I mean, I think, you know, to look at the other UNN schools that have, you know, this, you know, dress code or it's minimal and we are going, sifting through pages, literally. It's something to discuss. So I appreciate everybody's thoughts on this and I think it's all very, very valid. And, you know, Mr. Williams has always said, this is one thing that goes directly to students. It affects them. You know, a lot of things that we discussed in past didn't affect, it affects families and this community, but this is one thing that's every day that affects students. And so I think that we really need to consider that.
And I think it's a good reminder that you bring up, so our policies, they are subjective, right? And so if somebody's missing time, if somebody's, you know, my thought would be we could also use this as a reset. And Marla, I'm going to ask this of you, just not, I mean, you can stay right there. I'm just going to give you the charge that we make sure that we're clear, that this policy is clear for our principals and our staff. Because if it's clear as mud, then we can't expect them to be able to enforce it and use it if it's not, if it isn't, you know what I mean? If they're not comfortable with it and they don't understand it. So I would just ask that we make sure that we do a refresher on that as well. We, like I said, this is kind of a reset. We're coming out of COVID. We're back face to face. All of our high school kids are going to be in one place again. I mean, not that they weren't second semester, but I think we have a, a chance to start a new, fresh year with, and see where it goes. And if it's, and collect some data and bring it.
That's what I was going to ask is.
How many times we're sending?
No anecdotal stuff, you know, because we're all going to see different stuff when we walk through buildings. And depending on the building, we're going to see something different.
Absolutely. Somebody's going to tell you something and tell me, yeah, absolutely.
They know, yeah.
I'm going to support it. I've got mixed emotions about it. We are in a different time. We're better positioned in some ways, partly because of the dress code, I think. At the time, there was a really bad public res, or public perception of Waterloo schools. And a lot of it was addressed, but there was also, you know, there was open lunch not too long prior to that and smoking and loitering and trashing the parking lots and, and the businesses next to them and, and some of the yards. So I think, you know, I think we're better off in, in many respects of that. The other item was ease of enforcement. So that's the part that I think is still, is going to be interesting because you, you still have to call balls and strikes. But the fuzzier the strike zone is, the fuzzier the strike zone is, the, the, the more unfair it's going to seem to people. So to me, that's, that's kind of where, we'll wait and see, but that's what I would look for is, are we getting the same arguments? She got to wear this or he got to wear this. This isn't the same. If you get into this whole fuzzy strike, strike zone thing, then you, then you might as well go to uniform. And uniform, and by the way, part of what drove it was the uniforms that the parochial schools were wearing. They look like kids. Waterloo public kids don't. So they act like students. Waterloo students don't. That was, that was a large part of what drove this whole thing is, is really public perception. And we were, you know, I think our perception is, is much better than it was then, but we were really struggling. And, you know, it's the public that kind of paid the taxes and employs. So, so, so that's how it, it, it kind of came about to begin with. But yeah, ease of enforcement and, and, I mean, there was always, there's always going to be. My own daughter was on the news protesting it, you know, this.
So was mine.
So, so, you know, there's always two sides.
There is. And my daughter was sent home multiple times and she had to go home and miss instruction time, but she still graduated with pretty good grades. So I wasn't.
Mine has this year because we went back after, going every other day. And the first day back, they didn't tell the kids, oh, we went from not enforcing it, now we're going to enforce it, you know, and so things like that are, it's just rough.
It is rough.
And they found, these kids are finding devious ways to get around it anyway. So how effective is it when they're doing everything? If, if that's what their mindset is and that's what they're thinking about. You talk about a look for Waterloo schools, like they wouldn't even, when we were doing the policy review, Aster had suggested wearing the T-shirts, uh, school shirts every day and, and that was said no. Well, how does that not promote, you know, a uniform look? know, a uniform look?
They can wear them every day.
I thought, I thought we were told that they couldn't.
No, they can. They can. They can. Every, any day, any day they can wear. Oh, spirit wear.
It wasn't initially on there.
And the policy review suggested that, and they changed it.
Yeah.
We changed that.
At the policy review.
Yeah. And then we talked about it at the first time.
But then again, that can bring disparity, because some kid might not be able to afford five different Walhalla or Trojan shirts.
I asked, can they have a plain shirt that says Hoover? Would they write with marker? But no, we were told no. They can't. But why can't they?
Spirit wear.
Then they should be reasonably priced.
Yeah, of course. And we talked about that too. I think most schools do give out a T-shirt here or there. So I don't really, I personally have never heard that that be an issue. And I would say if a student does have a concern, they don't have a, talk to a site guarantee, we can set them up with that.
Well, it's clear that we have a plethora of opinions, and we also have some work to do. And we have some charges that we've given out. And the other thing I want to say, India, I agree with you about this, does affect our students, but it also affects our families. So it's important, it was important to me tonight, being that we're already at July 12th, that we give our families this opportunity, because, you know, people don't always buy everything with one paycheck. So we're giving our families, you know, six weeks to prep for some of these changes, which I think is great. So that's my last point, is that I hope this is well communicated to our families and our students. So I'm leaving that charge.
It also affects our staff. And I remember a male teacher talking to me prior to this, that he had a very hard time telling a young girl that her chest was hanging out, that that is not a modest shirt to wear in his classroom.
Well, but I read also with other U N's that they simply ask their neighboring female teacher that they just swap. I mean, it's not, there's ways around. And I understand, and I would hate to feel that way in their place, you know.
Go to across the hall and get another teacher over to tell her that.
All right. So thank you all for that enlightening and interesting conversation. So, all right. With that, all those in favor of approving the second reading of Board Policy Change 504.2 standardized dress code, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And, was that an aye? And those opposed, same sign?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. With one abstention, and chair votes aye. So motion carries five.
Yeah.
Five vote one. Yep. Perfect. All right. That takes us then to item J, which is on page 57. This is our property casualty and workers' comp insurance program. And the recommended motion here is the Board of Education approve the quote recommended by the district insurance company to participate in the I A S B safety group plan with a total estimated premium of $1,657,705 as presented. Thank you, Sue. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Stacy, India, Philip McCoyn. And with that, I'll open it for discussion. I know Michael Coughlin is not here tonight. I know that Kingsley Botchway couldn't answer some questions if people have them, but you can see P D C M's, you know, kind of listing of what this all covers for us, and some of the challenges and/or changes that we've seen in the market going forward. So if people have questions, please feel free to. And we also, I don't know, Lyle, are you on the insurance committee?
No.
Couldn't remember who was.
Just as everybody's going through that, a brief statement, just for everybody in knowledge as well, this is a really good quote. You know, if you look at the biggest page, if you go to page 60, is the one where it shows generally where overall the increase based on the market is in relation to all the different things that we need to get insured. You know, we've, we're really doing a good job, and P D C M has been a great partner in this work to get such a low quote. I was actually going to give Marla some kudos, she already ran out. But our quote, in particular for workers' comp, was at 5%. Typically districts are seeing upwards of 10 to 15%. A lot of that work has been Corey Minner in my office, but a ton of it has been Marla and her team, Ivan, especially with behavior, and some of the things that we'll be addressing, not only we addressed throughout COVID, a little bit before COVID, but also as we move into next year as well. And so we're, you're seeing the fruits of our labor, but we're not done yet. You know, we don't want to stop working on some of the pieces that are important. And I think Jody, as well, is going to be equally involved in making sure, Jody out there, from the W A's perspective, to make sure that we're all coming to the table and having this conversation about behavior holistically from a proactive standpoint instead of reactive standpoint. So there's a lot of work that goes into this. This is just a small snippet from more of a budget and finance standpoint than anything else.
And Kingsley, just refresh my memory. I believe that one of the reasons that we've also gotten such a great rate is that we've done this in consortium with the I A S B. So this is, you know, it's kind of group pricing. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. Which does help, which is another benefit of us being part of the School Association.
Does our lawsuit with Lowell, does that have any reflection on this whatsoever?
That hasn't closed, that hasn't, that claim hasn't closed. And so typically you'll see claims that are open, and because of whatever work that's happening. But that wouldn't show because the claim hasn't closed.
So I see there's 18% increase in cyber liability. That's somewhat understandable, I guess. 8% overall, you know, is still uncomfortably high, I think, you know, 8% a year adds up. But Kingsley and I were talking just a little earlier, the one area, if you look on page 65, the actual claims, they were trending upward for a number of years, but the last three years went from 994,000 down to 540,000, and then 465,000. So I'm guessing this last one, COVID might have had a beneficial effect on the 465, I'm not sure. But, you know, we've done some things such as, you know, the heated sidewalks by some schools to prevent slipping. And I don't know, you know, how much those add up to, but if Kingsley, if you could just kind of identify some of the things that might be contributing to that lower workman's comp loss, and looking ahead, if everybody, you know, just is a little more aware of whatever, that can continue to go down. And that's kind of a lagging, our prices on that are kind of a lagging indicator, because you have to be down several years in a row before it really catches up with you. But the trend line is good, but can you just speak to how we can continue that trend line down?
Yeah, a lot of it is the emails that you probably receive in regards to, hey, reminder, don't stand on the desk, please use a ladder or ask a custodian. And they seem like, you know, or walk like a penguin when you're going through ice. The reason why we've stated those things are because unfortunately, due to our population, our staff population as well, one slip on the fall, and, you know, you hurt your back, or you mess up your tailbone, or we had a teacher, you know, break their leg. I mean, that's where, when you have those incidents for an aging population, those significantly increase the claims exponentially. So slip, trip, and falls is one that we are going to spend a lot of time around. But also, and that's why I was giving kudos to Marla, you did see some decrease as it relates to the claims, but we also need to do more of a better job around student to staff interactions. And that comes from multiple points. How do we, a lot of the fights changed because of COVID, or fights that could have occurred around, trying to give a small, quick of analysis as possible. But because of, I know we had some issues with the lockers and the coats, but because we didn't have the lockers, we had less unstructured time where students could engage in that effort. We're talking about how do we, because of the change to hoodies, that could help us not have to have students have, put their clothes somewhere? We still, we just got to figure out those unstructured times, because that's where students get together and bump each other in weird ways and get in fights, or whatever the case may be. I mean, kids being kids to that extent. But unfortunately, we have staff members that, again, from a decline, or aging population, may come in, pulls a student away, pull their shoulder out, or do some other things. And so we're trying to walk that tightrope. But those are the two, two main areas in which we've spent a significant amount of time in. And we put, I mean, when I say time, tons of more meetings, meeting with staff members in regards to, how can we do this differently next time to make sure that you're not engaging in a manner where you're dealing with a student that you know may scratch your face or hurt you or some type of way, but using de-escalation. That's the whole change demand that Ivan has worked with in his team. So this is all, like, again, hours and hours worth of work that you're seeing some of that decline, but we still have to do a lot more. And I can, I can get a report to you once we have this year, really what we're planned out to do. But this is, again, kudos to Marla, kudos to Ivan, and Jen Edgington, a lot of the things that you've approved as a board that you may not have necessarily known, okay, what is this behavior specialist going to do? You've seen the fruits of that labor years later.
Can you just help me understand what was going on in 18 to 19 that there was that big spike?
Yeah, a lot of those, again, were just big claims around slip, trips, and falls. And it's either, it was less, it was less about behavior or students or student to staff interactions, it was more slip, trips, and falls. And, you know, it can be, and I want to say silly, because I want to be respectful, but it could be a staff member walking into a door, and that the glass is cleaned really well, and you walk right into it. Yeah, and then it's a workers' comp issue. And so those are some of the challenges where this number is somewhat misleading. One claim can be $250,000. So that's where it's tough to really give you an apples to apples comparison from your perspective.
Just curious, with the, having the health center for staff, has that made a difference in claims or not?
Not yet. We haven't seen that benefit, because typically we still use occupational health. What we were wanting to do, we're moving towards, and this is, again, when we have time to work on it, is looking at virtual. And so options where staff members can just touch base with the occupational health individual instead of leaving and still providing teaching or instruction at the time. And so we're looking at different avenues. The biggest thing is, and that's a part of our strategic plan as well, is having highly trained staff. So we have now put together a more comprehensive onboarding process, where they're working with multiple individuals to really understand what the job is. So you're not putting yourself in a situation with a student, or putting yourself in a situation just simply by not knowing, hey, you need to walk like a penguin, or you need to walk on the sidewalk. That's been cleared to make sure those things don't happen. But not yet. Those are more for long-term, just general health insurance.
Thank you, Kingsley. Is there anything else on this? All right. And seeing none, all those in favor of approving the property casualty and workers' comp insurance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carries. That concludes our action items for tonight. And so I will turn it over to Dr. Lindemann for her superintendent of the board.
Yeah, thank you. Excuse me. First of all, I guess, I just, since Jody's still here, I just wanted to welcome you as well. Thank you for taking on. It's always a challenge to lead, right? Leadership is not for the faint of heart. And so leading an association or whatever is also tough. So thank you very much for saying yes, and we look forward to working with you and your entire team. So, thank you. Second thing, yes, we will be communicating the dress code. We're standing ready to do that. And so there will be actually cycles or waves of communication. I'm sure there will be something yet this week, maybe tomorrow or Wednesday will be the first communication. But we'll just stay at it to make sure, because one communication doesn't necessarily, it's certainly not enough. So we'll just stay at that. I guess I would just tell our public too, that we are working internally to really work on our S R three funding. As we know, we got nearly $30, $34 million as part of this most recent wave of COVID relief funding. And so one of the criteria that had, that came with the S R three, which is a good thing, is that we would seek feedback from stakeholders. And so we have been talking about, this is pretty new, because it just became, the report just, or the, the application actually just became available, or the template of it just became available last week, I guess. And so it's actually not even live until August. So we'll, we have time yet. But we'll be asking for some feedback, and still trying to decide exactly how to do that. It will probably be a combination of focus groups and potentially a survey. So looking at that, and then regular updates to the board as far as how we're spending those dollars, and just kind of taking a look at that. So, let's see. Oh, and I guess I would just say that we, as we worked during the summer, I think a lot of times people think, you know, people may think that July would be the downtime, and, you know, it is a little, certainly maybe a little more relaxed. But really, for us, is a, is a, is a very big planning time for us. And so we're spending a lot of time trying to gear up. And it's, I guess my comment would be, it just is a lot more fun this year to plan for the opening day and for opening, the opening of our schools, because there's some semblance of normalcy this year. We're talking about things like life labs, and field trips, and junior achievement, and leader in me, and orientation for our sixth grade, you know, and incoming ninth grade, and all of those things. It just has some normalcy and band and football games, and, you know, marching band and all of that. So I'm pretty excited about that. And then I would just tell our public too, the, if you have a high schooler this year, you know that we have launched our very first career counseling center. And it was open in the month of June every day. And we had, you know, around 50 families who took advantage of that. It wasn't as, quite as much as I would have hoped, but, you know, in some ways, it was more than, you know, what it could have been. So we have already started to take calls for, we reopen on August 2nd. We're open every day in the month, in the month of August up until school starting. And so I know there will be a lot of calls. It gets real when that calendar flips from July to August, and we're going to start thinking about schedules. And so we are, we are here for you. We definitely want to respond to our families, and especially for our incoming freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. And if you're senior, you know, you might have just as many questions on that end as well. So we're certainly hoping that people will take advantage of that. And then I guess, just because I'm a math teacher by heart, but I also know the value of reading. And so my last comment would be to parents, you know, again, as we start getting closer to that August, if you've been relaxed, maybe a little bit like I have, and getting your students to read. India, can back me up on this. Read, 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 read. So now is the time, guys. Now is the time, parents, to really pick up those books and continue. If you have taken a little hiatus, now is the time. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to start with you, Ms. India, tonight.
Because I can't remember who I was. I give up.
Thanks for mentioning about the reading. We are back open at the library. We still get phone calls, still every day. Are you back open? We are open, and come get your books. We are ready for you. So thank you for mentioning that. Do I have anything else? I do not. Go ahead, Sue.
I don't have anything.
Oh, wow.
Been here long enough.
I have been kind of throwing around the idea of how we could get a student rep on the board. And so I got ahold of Margaret Buckton, and she was on vacation, but she is going to be getting back to me in a way that we can create some sort of student representation that would probably involve using a representative from each of the three high schools. If maybe they are a collaborative team that rotates or something like that. She's going to look at what the other U N schools do as well to get their, have student representation. So I'm really hoping that's something that we can do sooner rather than later. And then I just wanted to thank everybody for the discussion around the dress code. I know it's not always the most comfortable, but I really appreciate having a productive discussion.
Nothing? Wow, so y'all are making my life easy tonight. Woo, all right. Well, the next time we meet here in this room will be August 9. And I just want to remind everybody that school will start then, the week of August 23. We've got that rolling start, but we'll be getting those, getting those dates out more and more. So if there's nothing further to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So we'll.
Thanks, Aster, and a second?
Second.
Thanks, India. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Good evening. Happy rest of July. All right.